Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Melkin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis. Treasurer D'Varde.
D'Varde here.
Secretary Hatcher. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Lando. Trustee McVaymore.
Here.
And we have a quorum then. Is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tab A in the packet tonight, minutes from our last meeting. And we were asked to approve the minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the April 26, 2022 monthly meeting and the May 10, 2022 special meeting, as submitted.
I support.
Support. Is there a second?
Second.
I want to question on page four of the minutes, the spelling of Jan Gensheimer's name. I believe the proper spelling is G-E-N-S-H-E-I-M-E-R. And Vanessa, if you would check that and correct it if necessary, please.
Okay.
We have to prove the agenda.
Thank you. And let us, before we go further, approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion to that effect? And a second?
Second.
All in favor of the approval of tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Citizen participation, verbal communications, the WCC Education Association. Ms. Kissel is in the House and coming forward.
Well, it's May 2022, and certainly the excitement of graduation is still fresh in our minds. The students and families and friends so appreciated the chance to celebrate the many accomplishments after these difficult months. The graduation ritual is a valuable time for reflection and to look forward to new experiences. So again, congratulations to the class of 2022 and everyone who helped make it possible. Negotiations are underway. We have had two sessions so far with six more scheduled through the end of June. And I remain so grateful to the WCCA negotiation team's dedication and input in the process. The membership is well represented, and the team is working hard to balance the needs of our membership so that we can do the very best to support our students. In terms of grievances, we have one grievance that we are moving to arbitration, as I noted last month. There are also two additional grievances filed or being filed shortly. The WCCEA board has been briefed on these and understands that while the process is time-consuming, the grievance steps offer us and the college opportunities to clarify actions and reactions that impact a member's livelihood. As I've said before, the WCCA remains open to discussion so that we can work to create a sustainable contractual practice for this campus. And so because we've begun negotiations, many of my colleagues ask how things are going, knowing that we can't share any details. So to them, I want to offer some sense of what negotiating means to us. Negotiating is a process of trying to reach an understanding through clarification, rephrasing or confirming to balance shared and differing interests between parties. It can be contentious or stressful, but quite satisfying. For the WCCEA, we appreciate the confidence and the strength of our membership so that we may be firm and open in our process to work toward a contract that will best support the membership and represent the ethos of the college that is learner-centered and dedicated to student community and staff success. And then just also, I want to note, many of you may not have noticed in the news just this afternoon, we had another tragic school shooting in Texas. Right now, it looks like there are 13 elementary kids who have died, along with the shooter and a teacher. I have no words. And I hope, as leaders, we will continue to do whatever we can to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kissel. Are there any public comments this evening? Seeing none. Vanessa, are there any written communications?
There was one received. And I sent that out earlier today.
We saw that. Thank you. Special reports. Free College Week update. I understand that VP Mueller is going to give us some highlights of that, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. As you know, this is the second year that we have held a College Week versus a Free College Day. And so I'm here tonight to report to you on really the great success of this again. But before I do that, whoops. Let's make sure we did it. There we go. Before we do that, I would just want to talk to the board again about, just to bring about a little bit of information regarding what the purpose of Free College Week is all about. First of all, it's to provide value to our WCC constituents. It's to engage the Washtenaw County citizens, the businesses, K-12, and those audiences to position WC as the community's college, to support the college's brand through awareness and engagement, and also to deliver a free, quality, and high, and fun teaching and learning experience. The key stakeholders that we really focus Free College on are taxpayers, the community, business, K through 12, potential students and influencers, and donors. This year, now for the results. This year, we ended up offering 63 different classes over the 58 that we did last year. We had 99 different sections over the 82 last year, and 44 different presenters over the 38 that we had last year. Registering for Free College Week was 1,507 unduplicated headcount, the largest we've ever had. I'm really thrilled with this. Last year, we had 1,221. And we had 9,190 enrollments, just under 10,000, or slightly under 10,000. 6,220 enrollments last year, so we gained 4,000 enrollments approximately. Of those that register, we always get some melt for Free College Week. And we did experience a little bit of melt from those that register and actually attend. This year, attending out of the 1,500, we had 1,015, as opposed to last year where we had 898 that ended up actually attending Free College Week. This gives you, this graph gives you a little bit of an idea of the breakout of the age of the people that chose to provide us with a birth year who registered for Free College Week. Now, in the past, I know there's been some question about who actually is registering and attending, you know, Free College Day or Free College Week. And this demonstrates that, I think, there's been a myth that only senior citizens or a lot of senior citizens attend in the past. But you can see by the pie chart, based on those that chose to provide us the information, that it's in our sweet spot of enrollment in terms of that, really, that 25 to 41, 63-year-old student. So that is good news. We're hitting right in our target audience. We are picking up some high school students, and we are picking up some senior citizens. But the bulk of that is really in those non-traditional adults.
What percentage of the participants volunteered their age?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'm so sorry. There were, well, what is the percentage? There were about, you know, I can't do it in my head. I'm sorry. You guys could probably figure it out really quickly. I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
It was a math major. It wasn't me. I'm sorry. There were 111 Michigan cities that were represented, and this is very similar to last year. We had 101 Michigan cities last year, and we also had 16 states last year, so that didn't change. We still had 16 states this year, but we picked up a few more. I thought it would be good to provide you with a list of what people were really interested in. And as you can see, apparently, Will's Trust in Estate Planning are on top of mind of those people that are attending Free College Week. Not only was that the number-one class that was registered, but also the number-one that was attended. And you can see it changes slightly between what people register for and what they actually attended in terms of numbers. And you can also see that on the bottom of the attended list, it was sleep, why it's important, and ways to get it. And we also see that they're very interested in health and why it's not just diet and exercise. So those are three big indicators of what's happening, I think, out there in terms of our audiences. It's very top of mind right now in terms of their health. We ended up surveying, and 131 people returned the survey for us. And you can see that 4.28 was the average mean score that was given to the college. So I'm very pleased with that. People are very, very excited about Free College Week, and they're very supportive of us in terms of their experience. To give you some comments provided by them, you can see that they were really excited about financial aid. There was comment about that. There was a comment that they liked virtual, there were a couple of comments, actually, and they liked online types of the way that we reach out to folks online. Somebody had written that they couldn't be in the country, so they participated from Belize. So that's pretty interesting. The one that's really neat, I think, is that teachers, this one in particular, the teachers were good at answering my questions, and I'd look for it again next year. And this was very helpful in getting a taste of teachers and classes I might want to take. So if we're thinking that this is a good recruitment activity, it is. It is. Overall, this is a wonderful event. You can see one of the students said that after taking one Free College Week class, I signed up for a regular one related to the topic. This is a wonderful thing for WCC to do. So they're obviously being influenced by their participation in Free College Week, and they're ending up enrolling with us. One individual that I want to highlight is Lanal Covas. And she attended 40 different Free College Week sessions. She's trying to figure out what she wants to do. And she wants to come back to school, and she thought, well, I'll just try a bunch of things and see what I like. And in particular, she made the note that I didn't know about 3D modeling, and she even attended it twice. And I think that there's a lot of neat things that the college does offer, but a lot of people don't know about all the things that we do offer here. They're not familiar with some of the new technology, et cetera. So I think Free College Week provides a really nice opportunity for people to kind of take a little taste of it and see what they like. The planning team this year was myself, Lori Mouton, Fran LaForte, Rich Ressler, Pete Leszkovich, Rachel Barsh, Scott Wessenberg, and Steve Copera. But I can tell you that this isn't all it took to run for College Week. There were a number of faculty and trainers that participated with us. I have to give a really big shout-out, though, to Scott Wessenberg and Steve because they ended up setting up the website and the Zoom sessions, et cetera, and that is a tremendous amount of work. We had the library staff help us in terms of answering questions that came through the help desk, et cetera. So it really takes a village to put this whole thing together, and it was very, very successful. And I have to thank everybody at the college that played a role in doing this. Any questions?
The people that teach the classes, are they all faculty members, or do we have people, community people?
We had some people from business and industry. We had faculty, and we had trainers that trained for the non-credit side of the house. So we had a good mix of people that participated this year to present sessions. Last year, I should mention, last year, and Linda, you can jump in with the college credit, but last year, we had 109 people in the non-credit division take classes through Free College Week that had never taken classes before and subsequently enrolled this year at the college to take classes. And Linda, you might want to provide for college credit.
So we had about 300 of the students who took classes last year that already enrolled with us, some of them private students. We'll pick up an additional 165 students taking credit classes this year.
So you can see, it has an impact. It does have an impact.
Certainly does. Any other questions from trustees? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Blanca, excuse me.
I just would like to thank Vice President Mueller for an outstanding job to you and your department, from taking it from a day to a very successful virtual experience. So thank you so much, and thanks to everyone who helped make it successful.
We have another special report, Strategic Plan Goals and Accomplishments for 2021, 2022. And Dr. Julie Morrison is going to help us take a look at that.
Good evening. As we do every spring, we have a team here tonight, and we're pleased to present you with highlights from the 2122 strategic plan, highlights of our accomplishments related to our current strategic plan goals. Those are a reminder of how we got to where we are today. Trustees are familiar with our planning graphic maps, which we've created during each one of our planning cycles. Every iteration of our plan is built on the foundation that started with Shaping Our Future 2012 to 2015. And it's really worth noting that that means that the college now has over a decade of successful strategic planning in place. And that all started with a college-wide, and I would even say a community-wide effort in which we developed the eight strategic plan priorities that have formed the basis of every updated version of the plan since then, and which also guide operational planning and budgeting. You can see those eight priorities embedded in that graphic, in that roadmap of that first plan, and actually in the subsequent plans. And then you can also see there, Shaping Our Future Together 2016-19, that was our next three-year cycle of the strategic plan that was also developed around those same eight priorities. Today, we're at the end of the second year of realizing the goals of Shaping Our Future Success 2020-2023, again, built around those same eight priorities. And that is the third iteration of our strategic plan, and that's what we'll be talking about tonight. I want to share one more graphic map that you'll recall. In 2019, we had a special map created to focus specifically on the goal of developing IT as part of the infrastructure that supports student success. And we wanted to share this as it's incorporated into our current strategic plan, and you're going to be hearing quite a bit more about that in this presentation tonight. And here's a reminder of those eight priorities, each of which we'll touch on this evening. Professional development and organizational health, student success and satisfaction, innovation, agility, and responsiveness, visibility and branding, workforce development, partnerships, funding and resources, and community engagement and development. Tonight, we will be giving highlights of the three-year goals that were developed through the 2019 and 20 planning process. And we did that using multiple processes, including the master planning process that started in 2018, and looking at trend data and analysis, and also our SWOT assessment. These were introduced to the board in February of 2020, literally weeks before COVID shut us down. And that was actually fortuitous because the plan that we had developed was really critical in providing infrastructure and a foundation for us as we worked our way through COVID. Not always the case for every institution, but it was really critical for us and has served us well. COVID does continue to impact how we approach the plan and has continued to drive how we've prioritized our goals, how we've timed which goals we're working on, and also revisiting certain goals. And that will continue as we work our way through the final year of the cycle next And finally, we bring information to the board during the year related to a lot of these initiatives as part of the work of the college. You have a complete list of the goals and the status of those at your place for reference. Tonight, though, we'll be presenting highlights related to the goals that were most impactful this year. And we'll be talking about them instead of priority by priority, we'll be talking to them, about them as goal areas. And you'll see those areas here, and you'll see the priorities areas that they're aligned with over on the right-hand column. And you'll see there's some overlap because even though each goal is within one priority number, for example, professional development and organizational health, there is overlap. So for example, we'll be talking about mental health and wellness, which actually falls under multiple priorities, both professional development and organizational health, but also, of course, student success. And the other areas we'll be talking about are student success, the online campus experience, esports, STEM and STEAM, mobility, IT infrastructure, sustainability, and community engagement and development. And so now, to get us started, I will turn this over to EVP Blakey.
Thank you, Julie. I'm going to talk about mental health and wellness. And our goal is to create and deliver comprehensive wellness programming for WCC employees, and also to enhance our wraparound services to include student wellness services to increase retention and student success. So this past year, we've been able to launch WellTrack. It's an app that actually allows students, it provides them with wellness activities and tools to assist with anxiety, depression, and stress. It has a mood tracker and other different activities that the student can use. We also launched Protocol, our call center, which provides 24/7 mental health support. And that's with the phone number 833-WCC for you. We launched both of those this past fall and the early fall. The WellTrack app provides, also provides access to the shrink space, which is a listing of mental health providers, over 3,000 mental health providers across the U.S. And those providers are grouped by specialty. So if a student wants someone who specializes in anxiety, or gender issues, or any other kind of special mental health, they can find that provider. And it's also organized by insurance that's available. This has become an excellent support for our out-of-state students. We also implemented Let's Talk Tuesdays. So you always think of Taco Tuesdays, but we have Let's Talk Tuesdays where we have a WCC counselor who holds drop-in sessions, both virtually and in-person. And students can just drop in and learn about all the resources that we have on campus that are available to students. Our care team, we continue to provide in-service presentations to our staff, and we had another big increase. We had a 55% increase in referrals to the care team. We had 277 this year, and that was compared to 179 in a prior time period for 2021. Our counseling staff completed 338 personal counseling appointments and served 163 students. Remember that we're providing mental health services and counseling to our students, but we also are having increasing numbers of students who have outside therapists, outside services. And so for those students, we're providing non-clinical case management, which is helping them keep on track, but we're not going to be interfering with the current mental health services that they're receiving. Our counseling staff continued to have my mental health updates and provided wellness webinars on self-care, stress reduction, and our community health resources. We also had our collegiate recovery program. That program continues to expand and be successful. They supported 48 weekly led, so you think about how many weeks are in the year. They even had sessions during Christmas break when we were closed. They supported 48 weekly student-led sessions and had 167 one-on-one support sessions. They also partnered with our public safety department and the community organization Families Against Narcotics, and they hosted a Narcon, a Loxicon training for faculty, staff, and students. We had actually 42 people sign up and 50 people actually show up. I got my own Narcon training group. And then we had our frontline, WCC staff were certified in QRP. So our latest counselor that we've hired is an actual certified trainer in QRP, which is question, respond, and persuade. So again, it was training to help those staff that are frontline to better assist students who might be calling in or in distress. For employees, we had our Wellness Day, which was an event that we held to welcome back our faculty and staff in August, as we were returning back to campus. We had 12 different activities for physical and mental health, and we also provided information from Blue Cross Blue Shield, our nursing department, human resources, and student activities for support of staff. We also celebrated, May, this month is Mental Health Awareness Month. So we've had several lunch-and-learn sessions focusing on stress management, healthcare resources, and the mental health app that's available for employees, which includes coaching and training. And we, this past year, have participated in Alana's Foundation for College and University Flu Vax Challenge. So it's a national competition to help colleges increase flu vaccinations across rates for across their students and the community.
All right. I am going to go over our student success and satisfaction goals and highlight a couple of things. One of our goals was to complete and envisioning of the college's general education programming that promotes competencies developed through studies in the liberal arts and sciences, and to also develop and implement a suite of instruction and student support initiatives to address the needs of our adult learner. So one of the things that happened this year that was really awesome is that we celebrated our first annual Liberal Arts Week. So it allowed us to increase our focus and highlight through webinars and events with students and professionals, the professional skills that students actually learn in the liberal arts. LA Innovate is a group of faculty who have been working together pre-COVID, and now they've been partnering more specifically with the Career Success Center to really bring more professionals to their classrooms, to have more events that are focused on those skills that are learned in the liberal arts, and to really talk more about careers and those pathways from the liberal arts to lucrative careers. And again, we had 150 people participate in Liberal Arts Week. And in addition to that, LA Innovate has been working very closely with our professionals in the classroom program. This year, we had 27 classrooms and additional panel discussions. And two professionals to highlight is that we had the Director of Strategy of Autonomous Vehicles and Mobility from Ford Motor Company, and an entertainment attorney, and the Director of Player Engagement of the Miami Dolphins. And those were just two of the professionals. We've also, to increase student success and satisfaction, rolled out 10 accelerated business and IT certificates, including a 17-month associate degree in business. We've increased our evening classes. So many of our evening classes had not been offered as much when we started offering more online classes. But with our virtual offering from COVID, we actually have seen a big increase in the number of evening classes that we're able to offer our adult students, more specifically through our virtual classes. We partnered with the Michigan College Access Network, MCAN, to actually provide a student success coach for our Reconnect and Future for Frontliners students. And there at the bottom, I'll note that the Detroit Chamber of Commerce reports that in the fall of 2020, 39.2% of adults 25-plus returned to school. And because we had a coach here, and we had many of our students who are adult students coached, our winter 21 to winter 21 retention rate of those students was 71%. One of the last things that is extremely important this year in regard to student success, and our adult students specifically, is that we developed and rolled out core requisite math and English courses to immediately place students in college-level courses with appropriate support. And that is key because it aligns to the legislative rules as it relates to Reconnect and Future for Frontliners. All right, I'm going to move on to our highlights on the online campus. Our goal here was to implement programming and services to create a complete online campus experience. And a lot of that was really just operationalizing some of the work that we had done through COVID-19. So if you look here, you'll see our new online queuing system, Engage Online, where students actually can come to our website, and they can actually ask to meet with an advisor, counselor, or librarian, or any other services through our Engage Online queuing system. What you'll also note there is that once they put themselves in the queue line, they actually get a text message telling them that they're in line, and it also alerts them with a Zoom link when someone is ready to meet with them. We also have expanded learning commons and tutoring services online, the Center for Career Services, Career Success, as well as our writing center. And I think it's important to note that the faculty have done an amazing job of creating a very rich online writing center, and that's also helped us increase allowing more students to be placed in college-level writing because they've actually implemented a process to do more writing samples, which are more authentic than the placement test that we had been doing. Another thing that complements our online campus experience is that we've expanded our OERs. So we're getting close to some Z degrees, degrees that actually have no textbook cost. But in fall 20, in this year, academic year of '21, students saved $1.9 million through OERs. So we're continuing that savings. Some final things that we've done because of the online campus experience that we want to increase is really just focusing is really just focusing on some continuous improvement, on expanding access to on-campus services through Blackboard and other ways that we can highlight those services to students, increasing all of our training and support. We had 102 individual Blackboard training sessions. Those were one-on-one with someone from our CITL department. And then we also had 6,832 faculty support assistance instances, tickets, phone calls, and emails. Finally, we've made some big enhancements to Blackboard. One of them being that we've talked about some time ago was the Intelligent Learning Platform, ILP, which connects Blackboard to Banner and allows faculty to transfer grades directly from Blackboard to Banner, submit final grades, and increase the use of our Blackboard Grades Center. We've also implemented the Quickly Multi-Course Productivity Tool. With more faculty teaching online, it allows them to be more productive and more interactive and responsive to our students.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pete Leskovich, Director of Student Development, and I'm here to speak on the strategic goal of developing a competitive esports program as a student success, retention, and recruitment strategy. A little bit about where we came from. In 2020, 2021, we had the monumentous challenge of developing an esports program without a campus to develop it on. So through our remote working period, we focused on exploring creative solutions and really measuring student interest. We measured student interest through three surveys and found 175 students were interested in esports. We adopted an intramural app called Mission Control, where students could match each other on esports and play online. We hosted 10 intramural tournaments. We established our digital infrastructure and our brand. So our Twitch channel, our YouTube, our Facebook, our Twitter. And we built an active community of 32 students who are regularly playing throughout the year. We came back at about August 2021, and we had a new challenge of developing a program with a split audience of online students and in-person students. So we started gauging the interest. And we immediately did esports recruitment days in the Student Center to show students that we had it and start gathering a list of names. Through that, we took a number of different measures. One was developing an esports scholarship tied to our sports management certificate so that a student who's studying sports management could come and help us build an esports program and get that experience. We tested esports interest on campus through two club-level competitions against EMU's esports club. And our students played online for that. We held 11 drop-in sessions in the Student Center with two different laptops that are esports-specific, where students could kind of play against each other and get a taste for it. And we could get their contact information to continue building. Through that, the students indicated that they wanted watch parties. So we hosted esports watch parties, where we had Twitch up on a big screen projector with different snacks and food for the students. And students would come and hang out and watch esports together.
Excuse me?
Yes.
What is a watch party?
A watch party is simply, we had classrooms and we'd put the Twitch streaming games of esports, the recordings of games, or their live games as well. And the students hang out and watch it like a normal sporting event.
Right now, there's an International League of Legends tournament going on. And my son came over to my house to watch it on Twitch on our TV set.
They're watching esports just like they would a soccer match or a baseball game.
So while these international teams are competing, there are people all over the world watching. In fact, at Madison Square Garden, they've hosted tournaments that not only have the, they fill up, not only can you watch it away from Madison Square Garden, but people pay to be at Madison Square Garden to watch it on their big screens.
On my next slide, I'm going to talk about arenas, esports arena, new term. We also hosted one intramural tournament, Mission Control. We found that as we got more in-person with our gaming, students went away from the intramurals and want to be together. So overall, we served 47 unique students through esports during 2021, '22. And of course, we've reported previously on the Wolfpack Esports Week that raised $10,000 for Mott's Children's Hospital. They, this is a picture of the cards that they received. And we're going to make that an annual event so that our esports athletes are always giving back to the community. Now, for 2022, 2023, we've demonstrated our student interest in esports. So we went ahead and we ordered six esports gaming towers to make a commitment to our program. We budgeted to hire one esports coach to develop WCC's first official esports team. And we are developing a few different proposals for a permanent esports arena, which is, would be where the students would play and potentially have an audience watch. We're initiating high school outreach through our esports team by challenging local high school esports teams to scrimmages as we would in regular athletics. And we're continuing that Mott partnership to give back and, you know, make sure that our students always have the values set, along with playing video games and also serving.
Is there an age limit to be on to this? Or do they have to be a student at our school?
So as we build it out, it will fall under Board of Trustees' policy, where students will need to be enrolled in credit classes and have above a 2.0 GPA. That's a big part of student development as a whole, is we actually track our students to see, as they come into our programs, what GPA they have. If they're falling below the 2.0, we refer them to the Success Center and get them as much help as we can to get them back up and allow them to continue participating.
Do you know how many Big Ten teams have? Of the, what, 14 or 16 Big Ten teams? 14 I think.
I do not know the Big Tens. Right now, we've been exploring different leagues for esports, and it's very different because there's not an official, like, NCAA or varsity league. There are associations. And we're kind of looking at taking this as a club, into a club league, similar to our athletic programs.
Pete, when did you first speak to the Board of Trustees about esports?
Oh, I believe it was 2020.
I remember you were coming forward with the concept that none of us could grasp at the time, and how far we have come.
And our students, it's been very obvious to our students are interested. And the younger students especially are more and more interested.
Well done.
Now, was this more of a student-led initiative? Or is this something that your department decided to do because it is a growing trend?
So this was in the strategic planning process as an opportunity to explore. And then every initiative's going to be a student-led initiative after that in student development. So that was the past two years, was really making sure we had the interest and we're building the program to the right size of the college.
Awesome. That's great.
Any other questions?
That's great.
Thank you.
Outstanding job.
Yes.
All right, some highlights from STEM and STEAM. Our goal here was to position a college as a destination for STEAM education. And I've talked to the board before about just some highlights from STEM scholars. We currently have 90 STEM scholars. We've grown our faculty and staff mentors from 18 to 32. And our average, our students are transferring at a 15% higher rate than the national rate of transfer. And remember, with our STEM scholars, this is us serving and supporting through a very rigorous and robust program underrepresented students in the STEM fields. We do have 100% retention rate for each cohort fall to winter since we started this program in fall 2017. But the piece that I think is extremely important to the strategic plan is that we've increased enrollment in our math, science, and engineering divisions. So over the last five years, there's been an increase of 6.2% in enrollment. And in the last year, there's been a 9.3% increase in credit hours from the previous year, which speaks to a lot as it relates to us actually positioning us as a STEM destination. And you'll see on the slides here just some social media posts that are made. And they're highlighting our Super STEAM Saturdays program. And again, keeping that focus on the full STEAM for Super STEAM Saturdays, poetry events, and they've done things like pitch competitions. This one here that's highlighted at the bottom talks about climate change. And it's been a really good way to outreach, brand the college, talk about STEM scholars and the college in general, and bring more students to Washington County Community College. This year, another big highlight for Campus Exploring STEAM Week, they did it together. So when they brought those high school students to campus, they brought teachers to campus, they brought counselors to campus. And some of that was virtual. It also was a recruiting, as well as an information outreach event for us as it relates to STEAM. And then another key point that you've heard us talk about as well is our grant with the University of Michigan. It's us and Mott Community College who partnered with other state institutions, as well as the University of Michigan, was renewed for $3 million. And none of this would be happening if it wasn't for our great marketing department and one of our really, 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 really cool alum. Ayesha Bowe this year actually was given an alumni award, which was a really big deal for us because she has been a great partner for our STEAM Weeks. She's done so much mentoring our students. And you'll see just some highlights there from a social media standpoint. Marketing published 17 student alumni and eight program-focused STEAM stories and on the record, launched, and through social media. We gained 249,915 impressions for organic posts related to STEAM on Facebook, which is a 38% increase over last year. And we secured 620 earned media STEAM stories on outlets across the region and state with a potential reach of 4.5 million. And that was an increase of 132%.
Wow.
And then finally, our marketing department produced four president interviews focused on STEAM, including WJRs, Women Who Lead, and multiple radio spots.
That is awesome.
You may recall you met Susan Dentel, our speaker. Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Wow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My partner cried. As you know, Michelle and I co-lead our mobility strategy. So tonight, we want to give you an update on two of our highlighted goals. Is research and develop expanded programming to respond to 21st century training needs of individuals, business, and industry, as well as...
Oh, position in colleges, smart cities, technology, and training leader in supportive, workable, sustainable, and livable environments.
If you'll remember, last year, we came to you and discussed how we had just got this for Maki, and we were so excited. Well, this year, we're having to report that we actually used it and implemented within our academic curriculum, both within our transportation technologies program and cybersecurity. You might remember, we, about two years ago, bought a number of hacking bitches called Ford on a board. And now students are able to take what they have been doing in the classroom and be able to apply that with a real, live electric vehicle. This year, we were a recipient of a grant along with WIND, the Michigan Revolution for Electrification of Vehicles, MyRev, which is a $5,000 grant spread across the state by the governor's office to focus on convening employers to find out, as we move into this new EV space, what are, not just those technologies, but what are the jobs that we know are here today and that are in the future so that we, as colleges, can be prepared? But then also, we're currently in discussions with both the Office of Future Mobility, Electrification, as well as Michigan Auto, and a national training partner that would allow for us to create one of the first in the state of Michigan, electric vehicle charging station, installation, and maintenance programs. So really excited about that. In addition, we believe that mobility starts in middle school. So we've had a storied relationship with our Square One Education Network. And as you notice in this picture, this is our faculty on the ground at their annual event that happened two weeks ago, helping high school students across the state, some that are in Washington County, that come together and they literally, on a racetrack, have a small vehicle that they race that is having all those new technologies that we're talking about. And that has been a really good experience for not just those young people, but also for our faculty.
And I'm here to talk about smart cities. In the fall of 2021, Washington County Community College was asked to participate in the USDOT National Operations Center of Excellence Strategic Planning Team. And we were the only community college in the country that was asked to be at the table with Penn State University and the DOTs across the country, from all 50 states. So we were very honored to be there. We also participated in ITS Michigan in terms of the conference presentation on transportation talent in the future. And the result of that came in our enrollment of over 60 students in our fiber optics classes, including the city of Detroit and others that sent their employees to get that training because of the infrastructure bill passing. So that was important to us. We participated in the SEMCOG Broadband Task Force and Report as the trustee, McKnight-Morton. And that report is being used to advocate for broadband standards and implementations across the region for southeastern Michigan. We actually wrote a white paper, and we were endorsed by the CCAT that is being marketed by the University of Michigan globally to business and industry. And CCAT is the Center for Connected and Automated Transportation. We also participated in some conference sessions related to software, or actually a cloud opportunity called Unmuddled. And Unmuddled, the reason that we got involved was we wrote a contract to deliver data analytic technician training nationally. This was a group of five community colleges in the country that came together innovatively to bring business and industry to the table to hire people in training, national employers, to hire people directly out of the programs that they accept that we are doing training for nationally. We also wrote a $2.5 million federal electric battery technician, electric battery charging maintenance, community projects proposal. And we submitted it to our legislators at the federal level. So we're waiting to see if we end up being awarded that, and we're keeping our fingers crossed. We also joined the Michigan Telecommunications Association. And by doing that, we were able to link all of our classes that we've developed through the CCAT grant and our fiber optics classes to the association so that they can access training directly from WCC.
What type of organizations are members of the Michigan Telecommunications Association?
That would be a lot like your Michigan, your former Michigan Bells, more the private types of companies that handle telecommunications with telephone lines.
Thank you.
Completion of CCAT grant deliverables. We completed three classes in year five, Data Analyst Technician, XML for Data Analyst, and Excel Computer for the Data Analyst. And overall, through year five, these are the 19 online, on-demand classes that we've developed in terms of professional development training. In addition to that, we're working on year six, which was an extra year of funding provided by the US Department of Transportation that we didn't expect, but they gave us the money through the University of Michigan. And we're finishing out year six right now.
Outstanding.
It is.
I'm excited to talk to you about the Technology Sustainability Plan and Action Plan for Implementation. So our goal was to develop a nimble and agile technology strategy that was appropriately robust. We took a collaborative approach to both develop and then continue to develop technology, innovative technology solutions that advance the strategic and operational objectives of the college. You'll see here, 74 projects are in this list now. Again, it's a living, breathing plan, so it gets adjusted as needed. But 74 projects, 27 have been completed. 20 are in progress, 21 are not started, and six are on hold for various reasons. So what we did with each planned item is we aligned it with at least one of the college's strategic plan priorities. We also then developed these seven strategic plan categories, if you will. So security, stable, reliable systems and infrastructure, enhanced user experience, back-to-baseline. What back-to-baseline means is bring it more in line with the standards. And if it needs to be customized, then we need to do the customization in a more standard way so it's reliable and secure. That's basically what that means. Leverage data, operational and process improvement and effectiveness, and cloud SaaS environment. And then the chart you see at the right, SaaS, by the way, I'm sorry, means software as a service. So it's doing things in the cloud so you don't have to have infrastructure in your data center. And then the chart at the right illustrates the distribution of these projects across the various categories. So the implementation part of this, which is very important, this dashboard, if you will, has helped us move projects along to get stuff done. So this is a high-level dashboard that you're seeing here. But we can drill into each project and actually see the line items, each task that has to be done, who has to do it, and when they have to get it done by. So that person that's assigned that task can then go in and they can indicate it's been done. been done, and these individuals can also add additional tasks and bring others in. So this is a really critical component of actually moving these projects along. Completed projects, so this first one is really pretty exciting to me. This is the, we moved the connected car hacking lab and installed new technology. And you'll see a picture to the right of that technology. I think the fact that this college has this technology is exciting, and I hope more students can see what we have and take advantage of it. We also upgraded the college's mobile app in order to provide a modern mobile app for students and staff. And we upgraded our network infrastructure and phone system to improve reliability and performance. We did a faculty network replacement project, a wireless controller and access point project. We upgraded our fiber and we upgraded our phone service. And the feedback on especially, feedback on all of these has been very positive, especially from the faculty and on the phone service quality has been fantastic. And then we implemented the Argos and the Banner Operations Data Store to improve reporting and facilitate data-driven decision-making. And as you know, we used that to develop the annual student profile and the fall student profile. Active projects. EVP Hearn's already spoke about the ILP program, so I'm not going to get into a lot of detail on that. Only, I will suffice it to say that the feedback on that has been very positive on the automation and the streamlining that that does to some tasks that are needed on the instruction side. The ML Tech Project is something that we're in the middle of to deliver appropriately robust AV and related technologies to our leading-edge conference center. And then we continue to do the network upgrade project, so we continue to install switches, fiber, and to continue to improve redundancy. And what you'll see on the right is the two pictures, the leftmost of those two pictures is Mike Montgomery. He's installing an access point or AP in the ceiling. An access point is what you need to access Wi-Fi to get to the internet. And then you'll see on the right, what Pam is doing is she's patching that access point into our switches, those are switches, because you have to tie that to switches to get out to the internet. And then we continue to do oral web report conversions. And finally, cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is critical. And just this week, we took a colossal step forward with implementing multi-factor authentication. Multi-factor authentication, what that basically means is if you were default victim to a phishing scheme and someone says, hey, Todd, win a million dollars, click here, just enter your password. So I do that, put my password in, right? Because of MFA, if they try and log into me, I've got it set up to, you know, call my phone, and my phone would pop up and say, hey, did you just log in? I'm like, oh, I didn't log in. So that's a phenomenal step forward and a very critical step. Also, we've done protective measures. We've quarantined seventy-six instances of malware, blocked over four thousand website connections that are reported to contain malware. We've blocked over a thousand dangerous applications that typically contain spyware and adware, and we have the ability to roll back files if there's a ransomware infection encryption. We've done proactive scanning remediation of vulnerabilities, timely patching of all systems, and of course, we are in the process of implementing CrowdStrike next-gen antivirus.
I think I have a question.
Okay.
Please ask it, Diana.
I hope I can word this right. When we first started on the venture of having an autonomous vehicle building, our focus was different. Am I correct?
No. I mean, I don't...
Yes.
What do you mean, our focus was...
Our, I think our focus in training for the autonomous vehicle was different than it is now because of all that's coming out. That's what I'm saying. So am I right or wrong? Because it looks like...
Well, technology never sleeps, so it continues to evolve.
It's still the same, we still have the same end in mind, the same vision. But yes, the way we're getting there has to be, it has to be.
It's different.
It has to be.
And it shows, it shows of how much it has changed so that we can keep up and above and beyond what's happening right now. Because back then, we had no idea, which is like two years ago, maybe?
Of what, autonomous vehicle?
Autonomous vehicles.
About five or seven.
Five, something like that. And slowly, every year is changing dramatically. I hope I don't use the word wrong, but it seems like it is.
Right. Technology is changing the way we do business in every area.
Every area.
And I am so grateful to this board that we have Elusian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Next man.
Yes.
Money man.
Yes. I'm going to talk to you briefly about sustainability, both from an environmental standpoint as well as a financial standpoint. First, from an environmental standpoint, exactly one year ago in the May Board of 2021, the Board approved a two-part plan that was to eliminate our carbon footprint from an electrical standpoint. And we're doing that two ways. One, first, we're reducing the actual electricity that we use by twenty percent. So you see here that we're reducing our baseload, which means baseload is like the electricity that you're using that's not based on the weather, so like the lights and so forth that are on all the time. So we're on track to do that. We've reduced our consumption two percent already, but that's despite having to run the air handlers twenty-four seven because of COVID protocols. So we're hoping once we get out of that, we can hasten that even more. So that's reducing twenty percent. The other eighty percent is being addressed by my green power. So we engaged, as you all know, a DTE, the My Green Power Program, to reduce our carbon footprint. What we're doing is we're purchasing from DTE our renewable energy. So we're phasing that in gradually through 2029, 2030. And by that time, we will be one hundred percent renewable energy from an electrical We're also taking a look internally at our internal combustion fleet. So facilities in particular has a fleet of vehicles that they use around the campus to make sure the campus looks good, is moaned and so forth. So we have some pickup trucks and so forth. We probably have more than we need, so the facilities team has been looking at what do we really need? Do we need F-150s or could we be better served in certain cases by having things like these basically machines like golf carts, but they have like a truck bed on the back? They're called carts, basically. So we're looking at that. And we've also reached out and we've already ordered our first electrical mower, which you see, there's a picture of that here, which is a gravely mower. We've actually expected it a few months ago, but it's been delayed because of the supply chain shortages, but we're still hoping to get it in prior to the end of the fiscal year. And we've already started looking at other EVs that we're going to be ordering in fiscal year 23 that are in the budget. From a financial standpoint, we're all excited that the ML Building is going to be reopening in July. That is part of our Financial Sustainability Plan, so this is another revenue source. As that comes back online, we not only are expecting the revenues that we had prior to COVID and prior to remodeling the building, but we're actually expecting incremental seventy-five thousand dollars of revenue because of new pricing that we're going to have for the renovated building. In addition, we've had new revenue sources. We've used some of the HERF funding, we've used HERF funding for various things, but one of the things we used it for was to improve our enrollment in our non-credit courses. So actually, our revenue was one hundred percent over our forecasted goal for the year using the HERF funding. We're hoping that we can use that to jumpstart the program in general and that that will continue on into subsequent fiscal years. And finally, we've launched a feasibility study to study the viability of mixed-use space development. So figuring out how we can monetize land on the campus for future revenue streams, just best in the process of analysis right now.
Any questions? How are, before you go, Terry, how are Morris Lawrence bookings looking? You've got an estimate of revenue from them.
That would be Michelle.
Michelle could probably give you a better idea, but my understanding is we're pretty much fully booked.
Yeah, our Fridays and Saturdays have traditionally been booked throughout the year, and we really don't have space to add events to those weekends. Well, we've had some spaces in Monday through Thursday, and that's what we're going to be focusing on for the next year in addition to revenue. But in the past, we haven't really actively marketed the college's Morris Lawrence building, so I suspect that we'll be able to fill that space out easily.
That's a very nice report.
Now, our past bookings, Patrick and I, kudos to Patrick, he, over COVID, he's been doing wellness checks with our previous clients for the last three years. So that he has maintained, you know, some kind of activity and engagement level with those clients. And when he ended up emailing, I don't know if it was last month, letting him know, I can give you a vision of what that business was going to look like, he had a lot of thoughts. People have been just really anxious to rebook.
Well, that's good to hear.
Sorry.
So you said it's pretty much booked for the weekends. Are these previously been booked or are they just now getting booked?
No, we're, we just now booked them based on, you know, new activity. But it's for the most part, I mean, it's former clients that have not been able to place events they've held in the past. So they contacted us to rebook. It's really been waiting, jumping up the bid, in fact.
I ask that because I know of one group that had it booked and then COVID hit. So I didn't know if it's because it was before the, you know, the pre-COVID or just now.
No, we just...
Okay. Good. Okay, great. That's wonderful to hear.
Dr. Steve DiBardi? I don't know, Terry, I don't know if this is for you. One thing I was looking at is our goal for 2023 is to have a $2 million Student Emergency Fund Endowment. You, I know it's a, the foundation is doing that, but are you aware of where we stand with that goal?
May I answer that?
Sure.
I'm going to answer that by calling on Tina Casali. Tina Casali is our interim Associate Vice President for the College Foundation.
Tina, can you come forward to the microphone, please?
Thank you.
Hello?
Pleasure to see you.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So the $2 million endowment for the Student Emergency Fund is something we definitely want to have in place. We think that the earnings of that, about $100,000 every year, will support the needs of our students. And I just actually met with Bhushan, who's vice chair of the foundation, and that was a topic of our conversation because he is also chairing the Development Committee for the foundation board. And we need to get going on that, right? We've talked about it for a while and it's just we need to start putting some plans into place. It's something we talked about and we need to really probably do some behind-the-scenes kind of fundraising. Typically, you do that when you're going to do sort of a mini campaign, which I would define this as, and get some major donors who will support the program in a substantial way before we do any public announcing of a formal campaign. Usually, when you're doing the kind of the infancy of a capital campaign or a small mini campaign, you want to have fifty to sixty percent of your dollars raised before you vote public. So we need to identify some major donors and there's some charts that we can put together for determining how many major donors we need at a certain level and it's sort of a numbers game, but it's something that is definitely on our list.
The reason I ask is I see this tied to student success, sustainability of keeping students enrolled who experience economic emergencies, and we're there, the foundation is there to step in.
Absolutely.
So I see this as really benefiting the success of students, long-term success of students, which is why I'm really encouraging that, I hope we get there soon.
Actually, we've been fundraising, I thought, for quite a while.
We have.
I know I contributed $20,000 to it, so I hope it's...
It is. There is money in the pot and some of it's been expended and some of it's been endowed, but the goal is to have the endowment, right? It's $2 million. But at the same time, we're raising money so we can get that money out to students right now, right? So we figure we need about $100,000 every year so that we can promote it a little bit better. But right now, we're kind of fundraising as we go along, but trying to get that money out as well. So there's a pot that's endowed, and then there's been money that over the last couple of years that has been raised inexpendable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Gina. Great.
Are there any other strategic plan reports that we're awaiting?
Yes, there is one more.
Oh, look, who's coming for us now.
And I'll go quick. Of course, our last strategic goal for tonight is around engaging strategically with local communities served, particularly to address areas of access. And you might remember, two years ago, we came to the Board at our annual presentation and talked about the repurposing and repositioning of the work that we do at Harriet Street at Park Ridge. No longer would it be tied that we only do adults at Harriet Street and youth and children at Park Ridge, we would really look to rebrand that as college and career readiness. Well, as a part of that reimagination, we successfully last year hosted our first summer learning experience, which was a little different than summer camp. We focused to have fifty young people, not ninety or a hundred, that we really could focus on developing a long-term relationship with. Those six weeks included access to certified math, science, and reading and writing teachers for the first time, so that those students who we could come in and know their scores, where they were, and develop a plan for them to be able to grow academically. But then also, we exposed them to STEAM activities, and they had an amazing time both on the ground and throughout different activities that we had, field trips we took. But as you see on the picture, that was our graduation, they were all in masks, but they had a great time. And we received a number of support from community members and external partners that allowed each parent that was in the building to be able to get access to training at a laptop for their family. And we had about an eighty-five percent participation rate from all those parents that came to those that actually came through the program. And those were not just parents, I should note, they also were grandparents, they were raising their grandchildren. But also because of that new focus over the last year, we received over $100,000 in private and external funds, both from the state of Michigan and our community foundation, United Way, Washtenaw County, and the Barfield Family Fund, which generally designates every year to the operations of Park Ridge. But then we also see community engagement as, of course, starting off with our young children, but also transitioning to adults, to both parents as well as those individuals that were looking to scale themselves up. You see in this picture a representation of one of our bootcamps that we mentioned a few months ago. This was our healthcare, Foundation of Healthcare Bootcamp. And this was a strategic partnership with Jewish Family Services here at Ann Arbor, where they received a grant to be able to impact those individuals that were coming to Ann Arbor that were refugees. So this was the first class of refugees where there was around a ninety percent non-speaking of English participation. They had a translator, they're currently enrolled in ESL classes, and ninety-five percent of the individuals that went to this program received a full-time job at the completion of the program, which was two weeks. And that's really what we see the future being is these bootcamps, both for the non-credit and the credit side, that we come together and be able to respond to the needs of industry very quickly. That is...
That's awesome. Well, thank you.
The Chair recognizes President Blanca.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I, yes. Well, I asked him first. Did you have a question for him first?
She has a question.
Yes.
Sorry, sir.
Stand by.
I'm just blown away by this. I really am, you know. I know where Park Ridge used to be at and where we are now with this program. And not taking anything away from Anthony, but I think with Anthony and training and getting the right people in that building and the programs and the tutors from Michigan and Eastern, I think this is going to go a long, long ways because the south side of Ypsilanti is a tough nut to crack. I know, because I worked in that area for many years. So what we're doing now there, thank you, thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it. Anthony and his team are doing phenomenal work, so we're really excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
President Blanca?
Tonight was about leadership.
Yes.
When you hired me, those of you that hired me, and those of you that keep me, thank you. But when you hired me in 2011...
When you hired me in 2011, you asked for a strategic plan. And I am so proud of my, of the executive team that I have and all the administrators I have and the faculty and the staff that have worked to support this. In all these years, what you heard, actually what you heard tonight, what you heard last year, what you heard the year before, that is all through that strategic planning process. And, you know, one of the things that I'm extremely proud of here with, with everyone in this room and those that even work, and those that work with them, is that many places have a strategic plan and they're called vinyl trophies. And usually, and maybe now they call it something else because they're, you know, use it online, but a vinyl trophy is a plan that you put in a binder and you stick it on your shelf and you say, that's, oh yeah, that's our plan. We live our plan. We work our plan and we know where we're going all the time. And that plan has helped us, it's guided us, as one person said, through our pandemic because of what we've put through our plan. And so I want to thank everyone that has not only led the initiative, but that has supported the initiative. And there have been, and many of these things have been started by faculty members too that are not here tonight. I mean, just so many things, but it all came from that plan. And then there's one quiet person that is probably the mightiest person, and that's Julie Morrison, that has kept us on schedule and has moved us forward in the attainment of our goals. So I want to thank everyone here in this room for what you've done and all of the individuals that support you in the accomplishment of these very important strategic moves. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. You deserve it. You deserve it. You read my mind, I was going to do that, too.
Thank you. Moving ahead to monthly reports, personnel recommendations, they're tab B in your packet tonight. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion, please?
I'll move.
And support?
Support.
DeVarty. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say the full-time employment ending is John Bruckner, grounds maintenance, pesticide, 25 years of service. I applaud, applaud him for doing this and I don't, the word pesticide scares me, so I, I hope he had a mask and some full body armor doing his job. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The recommendations are accepted. Thank you. Financial reports, April 2022, tab C of the packet tonight. VP Barnes.
Thank you. I'll just highlight a couple of things for you in the financial report. Firstly, the total tuition and fees, I just wanted to highlight that since we've already started the spring summer semester, that this is largely baked, I would call it, the $510,000 variance. You'll see some minor ups and downs because we have some late start classes and some refunds and so forth, but, but largely we should finish roughly a half million dollars favorable to our budget. I'd also like to highlight in the state appropriations line, we're actually getting a half a million dollars that we did not expect from the Local Community Stabilization Authority, which is an authority that basically compensates us for the loss of personal property taxes. That law was changed a few years ago and so the state sets aside money to compensate us for that loss of revenue, but it is much higher than we had expected. It is difficult for us to forecast it. We actually don't really know how it's completely calculated. We're trying to figure that out, but suffice to say about a half million dollars favorable on top of the $600,000 favorable that I've mentioned several times in the past. So in total, $1.1 million favorable in state appropriations is what you should see by the end of the year. In terms of expenditures, really the same explanations I've given so far are to date, really nothing has changed there. I'll say some of it's this $3.8 million of favorable variance so far this year. A little bit of that is timing. The departments tend to spend a little bit more in May and June to spend some of their budget before the end of the year, so I would expect that variance to go down a little bit, but, but still very favorable for the year. Thank you.
Any questions of VP Barnes? Thank you. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for April 2022 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
I move we receive these reports.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Have support? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recommendation is adopted. Thank you. Tab D is the facilities development report and I see VP Johnson closing in on us now. Welcome.
Good evening, Board.
If I may make a comment before he even starts.
President Blanca.
I just want you to know, I'd like to thank him so much because, you know, with our VP for facilities, who's, you know, is on a leave at this time, Bill postponed his retirement from May until August so that he could help me and help us, the college, you know, continue with all of our projects. And at this time, he is working with the facilities team and he is working with the construction team and I just want to thank you, Bill, so much for that.
I think that's what you call an invaluable resource.
Yes, and a very good friend of the college.
Thank you very much. And I was supposed to be with my, my wife watching our granddaughter in Chicago every week, so my weeks I'm here, she's so, so loving it, so I thank her.
And we thank her.
Yes.
But very, very glad to be here. And please report that both our Morris Lawrence and Great Lakes projects are right on track and within budget. I'd like to go through with the board some highlights for that. So, you know, major areas, so there is a lot of activities. You get towards the end of a project, there's a lot of different trades all happening at the same time. You heard from Todd Krueger on the IT side when there was a flurry of activity. So one of the more labor-intensive activities and central to the building is the atrium of Morris Lawrence, and we're putting in a new terrazzo floor. And as I think I explained to the board last time, that's a multi-step process and it's in really critical junctures. You know, it's right in the middle of the building and all the trades want to be in there and they can't because we got to get this terrazzo floor. So a lot of the trades are working at night when the terrazzo craftsmen are out and they can, they can get to certain areas, but it's just about done. It's going to be done by next week. The final polishing of the floor will, will be done by, by next week and it is beautiful. The skylights are completed, they're fully installed and the picture on the left gives you a sense of, you might remember it was kind of that opaque yellow, it had just weathered. It, it, it was timed, so once again, it's, this is the north face is where we put the skylights. The south face, which in this picture is the left side, for energy conservation, we, we went with solid, solid wall. You'll also know that some kind of cool lights. And so our light fixtures, we opted for an option that allows us to kind of change the mood and tone of the lights in not only the skylights, but in the atrium proper to kind of suit the mood of the events that happened. It's all LED, all very high energy conservation, and with that technology comes a lot of cool applications. On the right, you, you can kind of see kind of a, and we have a drone, STenco has a drone operator that goes out twice, twice a week and takes pictures from the top. And so you can kind of see what that, that looks like. So we are, as you might imagine at this point, we're about six weeks from completion. That we should have most of the ceiling tiles in, the lights in, and that's well on its way. This happens to be, we're getting to final finishes now, so this happens to be in VP Mueller's area. So the, the final finishes are just about done. The carpet's in, the glass glazing is in, the light fixtures are in, so it's all starting to come together and the carpet folks are working their way around the rest of the trades and putting, putting that in. You might also recall, very exciting, the new west terrace. So right outside the boardroom doors, which if you look kind of in that left picture, that far door is kind of right beyond that door is where the board would typically sit. So this new terrace has been poured and we're, we're just going through the final touches. You'll see those little stanchions there in that left picture. So that's a series of light fixtures, some are high to provide adequate lighting, some are low, and then some are for power and data. So when we're out there, if folks want to sit down and be able to work on a laptop, they have data access as well as Wi-Fi, there, there'll be a higher, hardwired as well. The HVAC system, which was at the kind of the cornerstone of, and backbone, it's all but done. So the piping is fully complete. Siemens is doing the final control installation, the software installation, and it is, it is right on schedule. So then I'll move over to the Great, the Great Lakes. So the exterior is now come complete. There's two views. The left view is an aerial view that you, you can see that kind of shiny roof is the new addition and the right is a little closer up, that the brickwork is, is all, all but done. There was one corner there where they were finishing off, as, as you see, that is just, just about enclosed as, as we speak. The interior floors have, have been poured, the walls are, are going up within the building as we speak. The HVAC system, the plumbing, the electrical, that's all being installed as, as we speak as well. So both are on, are on schedule, so we're, we're very, very excited about it.
Got a question, Mr. Chair.
Very good news. Questions?
So when people walk into the building, will the lights come on and they leave, the lights go off?
We, we do have automated light, light controls. It has different settings for different times of day, but yes, definitely do. That's all part of our goal of about a 25% reduction in, in energy consumption, you know, in, in that building, not only from the improved HVAC system itself, but lighting and lighting controls as well.
Great.
Any other questions from trustees? It's good to know that we're in good hands. Thank you very much.
Without a doubt.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Are there any remarks from members of the Board of Trustees? Anybody have comments on anything on their mind? We, we find that.
Mr. Chair? I do.
Trustee McKnight-Morton, yes?
This is, this is a little plug. I'm on a project called Embracing Our Differences and I think I've spoken to people about it. This was a project that was started initially in Sarasota, Florida about 20 years ago. And what this means and is, it was from Sarasota, a person who brought it back here started in November. I was contacted by her in December and her name is Nancy Margolis. I don't know how many people know that name, but she's a mover and a shaker.
Former trustee.
Former trustee, and I replaced her on the board seat. So being a part of this is, at first I couldn't visualize even though it was being talked about, just like a lot of things we hear, but you have to just go by faith. This project is taking artist paintings from elementary, middle, high school, and adults to be put on billboard size banners and, and will be, that are, excuse me, that are put on, I don't know what you call those things to hold up the, the billboards, anyway, those stakes or whatever it is. And there's four parks that if you want to go by and see it, the, each of the banner, each of the paintings and pictures are unique. Some are from around the world, some are, are from Sarasota. We have 28 from our region, from elementary and middle school and high school, schoolers and, and adults. They are awesome. And on the, on the banners, there are quotes and these quotes are just awesome to read. It just, just blows your mind and some of them are like four, five, six years old, elementary, middle, whatever. And, and I, when I say all around the world, I mean that. Brazil, Ukraine, India, all over the world. And it's just awesome. The, the ones that has the most banners is right over here at, at Gallup Park, but it's at the corner of Getty's and here in Parkway.
Across from Huron High School.
No. Just not, not that one. You have to go down, pass where the bridge is, you pass the bridge, but it's still on the other side.
Oh, yes.
And you will see these banners, these pictures. It is, I can't tell you, you have to go and look at them. It's just breathtaking. And we had a grand opening this past Saturday. It was just awesome. A lot of people were there and they were just blown away. We have many, many, many sponsors and Washtenaw Community College is one of the sponsors.
Thank you.
There's three other, actually a total of four locations. Gallup Park, as was just stated, Park Ridge.
Leslie Park.
Leslie Park and the River.
Riverside.
Riverside Park in Ypsilanti. They are breathtaking and so if you have the opportunity to swing by, actually driving down Getty's Road going towards Huron High School, it'll be on your left, you can't help but see it. It's just right there. You turn your head, you're like, wow. So it's, it, it's something to, to really spend some quality time with, your family, yourself, and just really embrace the, the unity that everyone who has participated in that project have displayed and through their art. We've had the opportunity to meet a young lady, 13 years old, on Ypsilanti. We happened to show up on our tour and she was standing by one of her, by her picture with her father. And so, you know, we greeted, hey, how you doing? And her father said, well, she's here because of her picture. And I was, I was shocked and was surprised and happy to see that I got the chance to meet a young, a young student involved. And she showed me her picture, I, I have it on my phone, and just a beautiful young lady of Arab descent, but it didn't matter because that was the whole purpose. It was just everybody that was involved and it was really nice.
Yeah. So anyway, you get a chance, it's, 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 it's going to be in the parks until September.
Yep.
So you have a long time to go and buy and look at it. I'm telling you, you'll, you'll really be blown away by them.
Thank you for that briefing. That sounds good.
It is.
As many of you know, commencement was Saturday and we'd asked trustee Fleming to make the commencement address, but as the week progressed, she found out she had no voice, which is why I haven't heard from her this evening. But trustee Vice Chair Davis was kind enough to step up and do the honors at the commencement and.
It was my honor.
We're grateful for that.
I really enjoyed doing that. I had the opportunity twice before to speak at the Honors Convocation in the ML Building and it's just a lot of joy to be able to speak to the students and celebrating their, their struggles, their successes and, and, you know, just, and let them know personally when they walk across the stage, not to. when they walk across the stage, not to give up, just keep going. So I had a really good time. Thank you.
I'll bet you inspired them. Good work. Any other trustee comments? President Blanca, it's your turn.
I have one comment. Commencement was amazing, and I'd like to thank Kathy Curry and her team. And Kathy is the individual that organizes commencement. And she did an amazing job. And not only that, the convocation, and she organized that, which was before, it was the advisors that did it. So we owe a great deal of thanks to her. And also Eva Samolsky. I'd like to thank her for designing all of the planners that you saw on the stage. Those were all designed by Eva.
Where is Eva?
So Eva, Dean Samolsky back there. So, you know, it just shows people are really...
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. I mean...
That's the end of your remarks?
That's the end of my remarks, sir.
Without further ado, we'll move into old business. WTMC contract renewal. It's tab E in your packet tonight. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees authorizes the board chair to sign the resolution establishing the method of selection and the qualifications for Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Directors and authorizing the issuance of a charter contract to Washtenaw Technical Middle College. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. DeVarty moves.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Vanessa, please call a roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Since I'm signing this, I don't have to abstain, do I?
No.
Just checking. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Video streaming hosting service contract. Tab F in our packets. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a three-year contract with UJF not to exceed $98,485. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And support, please.
Support.
And I have support. Any discussion on the matter? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Recommendation is adopted. Next, we have the Library Management and Discovery System, ExLibris. It's an action item. It's tab G in the packet tonight. This recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the purchase of the ExLibris Alma and Primo Library Management and Discovery System at a first cost for full migration and license fee not to exceed $142,000 for the 2022-2023 academic year with an annual renewal option up to four additional years or five years total for a total cost not to exceed $452,080. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, and is there support?
Support. DeVarty supports.
And we have support. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question. So, okay.
I may need to ask EVP Hearn to field this question, but go ahead, please.
I trust that there is some sort of library management system in place already. So this is a new, improved upgrade to what we already have? And it's just a matter of a flip of the switch to switch us over from what we currently are using, or...
It's going to be a lot more of a flip of the switch.
Okay.
But it is actually an improvement to what we have. One, it's cloud-based, and it's actually integrating two systems into one. So it's a replacement system, but it is a much better system than what we currently have. And they'll be implementing that over the summer.
Okay, so there won't be any downtime to make this crossover?
They're going to run things parallel, so there should not be any downtime when they make that change.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
The recommendation is approved. Thank you. Next, a resolution to approve the 2022-2023 tax levy for general operations. It's tab H in the packet. And the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 tax levy of 3.3548 mils for operations. As submitted, the 3.3548 mils will generate approximately $66,754,432 of gross tax revenue. Do I hear a motion?
Support.
I have a motion and I have support. Thank you. Love that participation. Is there any discussion on this recommendation?
I have a question.
Trustee DeVarty?
So Terry, this is, the gross tax revenue is based on our estimate of the tax base? Or is it the current tax base?
It's our estimate. Well, it's the newly released tax base. So these are the latest and greatest numbers. $66 million is the latest.
The most recent tax base. And we've seen, I think you revealed when we met earlier last week, that the tax base has increased at a faster pace than we had initially anticipated last year.
That's correct.
And hopefully, we see that going forward.
That's correct.
But we're estimating conservatively.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vanessa, would you please call a roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
The recommendation is approved. Thank you. Next, tab I in our packet. It's approval of the proposed 2022-2023 budget. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the total revenue and total expenditures and transfers for the 2022-2023 budget plan as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. DeVarty moves.
Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
That recommendation is also approved. Thank you. Award of Catering Contract, tab J in our packets. This recommendation is that the Board of Trustees authorize college administration to execute a four-year contract with Creative Dining Services for contracted catering services beginning June 1, 2022. Under terms of the contract, the college will pay Creative Dining Services $24,000 in management fees for the first year, and the management fee amount will increase a maximum of 3% annually. The contract would also include a provision for a possible five-year extension at the college's option. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. DeVarty moves.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
And there is support. Is there any discussion? The last sentence reads, and maybe Terry could help me. "The contract would also include a provision for a possible five-year extension of the college's option." Possible five-year extension and option? Is there some ambiguity there, or am I being too picky?
Maybe supportive of that, but our option...
We could take possible out of there, since it says our option.
Well, let's strike possible, just for the sake of clarity, then. How do we proceed with that?
Well, I would accept a friendly amendment, or I'd move a friendly amendment if there's no objection to just take that out.
I support it.
And support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Possible is stricken. And should I read the recommendation once again? Like, it's clear? All right. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
We have catering. Thank you. New business. For discussion, 2022-2023 department chair appointments. EVP Hearn. It's tab K in our packets.
So in front of you is the list of the 2022-2023 department chairs for the academic year. Faculty voted on these department chairs to either keep the ones they had or make changes at their April department meetings.
May I have a question? So the faculty voted and the deans approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So it says discussion, but do you feel that we could vote on this tonight? Or we just need to wait until when?
Is there any reason to vote on it tonight?
I'm asking a question.
Let's ask EVP Hearn. Is there a sense of urgency in your mind?
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get back to it next month, okay?
Sounds good to me.
Next, we have approval of 2022-2023 faculty sabbaticals. EVP Hearn.
So we have six...
Tab L.
We have six sabbaticals here presented. Two for Fall 2022, two for Winter 2023. And these are all new sabbaticals that went through the Sabbatical Committee for Approval. And there is one additional one for Ernesto for Winter 2023. It was a holdover from COVID. He had got approved for a sabbatical before it came to the board, but we did include that in this report.
Excuse me, you said six, but I only see five. Am I saying that wrong? One, two, three.
I'm sorry. Five. Five, and in the five is an additional one.
All right, thanks. Okay.
Any other questions? Next, we have OE HVAC replacement contract. Thank you, Ms. Hearn. EVP Johnson. This is tab M.
Tab M. As part of our deferred maintenance list in the OE building and the auto services areas, as you might imagine, they have a dedicated HVAC system. There are three units there. We're asking the Board to approve at the next meeting discussion for this meeting, a contract to replace two out of the three. The third unit's a bit more complex in its design and location. You have to do a little bit more design work, bid that out. So we had received three bids. You should see that on your bid sheet. And we're recommending that we go with Monroe Plumbing for $145,000.
Any questions? Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Just a point of clarification. I see Monroe Plumbing that versus Boone and Dar and John Dar Mechanical, they are the lowest, but are they the best?
The college has done a lot of work with Monroe Plumbing. They're very, very good. So as the lowest bidder, we believe they're the right recommendation.
Yeah, it scares me when I see the lowest.
Yeah, it's like you get what you pay for.
No, Monroe Plumbing is very, very good, and they've done a lot of work on the college.
Okay. All right. I trust you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Got an action item to bring to your attention. It's tab N. We have a recommendation that the Board of Trustees revise their 2022 schedule of monthly board meetings and hold the July 24, 2022, monthly board meeting instead on July 19, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at the Health and Fitness Center at WCC, located at 4833 East Huron River Drive, Ann Arbor, Michigan. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I think I got motion and support. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
The date is so changed. Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting and move into closed session to discuss a periodic personnel evaluation. Is there a second?
Yes, support.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned.